Members of the public, before we commence the meeting, can I draw your attention to the fire regulations which are displayed on the screen behind me? The various emergency exits, one, two and three, the one you came in through. We meet across the road, under the canopy outside Waitrose. Don't use the lifts on the way out, just in case. But tonight, there is no practice, so if the fire alarm does go, it's for real. Can I also ask you to turn your mobile phones to silent or off? And there. Members of the public, I'd like to say that as a committee, we understand that feelings might run high with the matters under consideration. However, please, I ask you to be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee members, and refrain from booing or cheering or any other form of disturbance. This is a meeting held in public, it's not a public meeting. So now, let's move on to the business of the day. Item number one on the agenda at the minute, the meeting which took place on the 8th of June have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content to assign those as a true record?
Agreed.
Thank you. Apologies for absence, Emma.
Thank you. We have apologies from councillors Jo Hargreaves, Mike Hodge, Sam Pritchard and Chris... Oh, no, Chris is here. Sam Pritchard, thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Members' declaration of interest. councillor Frost.
Thank you very much, chairman. I declare that I am a member of Farnham Town Council who has considered these applications, but I am coming to this afresh, bearing in mind the officers' reports.
Thank you very much. Noted, the Farnham Town councillors and councillor Cowan.
Yes, thank you. I shall declare a pecuniary interest, although it's really a prejudicial interest, in WA 2016 0716, land at 7 and 9 Pine Ridge Drive, as it sounds, as though I'm far too close to be objective, so I should be leaving at that point.
Thank you very much. And Emma, questions from the public, have we had any?
None received, chairman.
Thank you. Item number five, any relevant updates to government guidance? Elizabeth?
There are none this evening, thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. And the quarterly appeals update, Louise Yandle.
Thank you, chairman. The first appeals decision on the update relates to the change of use from an office to residential at Prospect House on Bethel Lane in Farnham. This was refused by the committee because of the overdevelopment of the site that would result in cramped development, along with loss of light, privacy and an overbearing impact to the adjoining occupiers and the failure to provide adequate amenity space for the proposal. The inspector disagreed with the council and allowed the appeal, concluding that the extension would appear acceptable and would have an acceptable impact on the adjoining occupiers. And whilst there would be no amenity space, this was considered acceptable, given the proposal's close location to Hell Recreation Ground. The second appeal decision relates to the erection of a detached dwelling with an detached garage at 6 Latchwood Way in Farnham. This was refused under delegated powers because of the erosion to the semi-rural character of the area and the impact on the ASEQ. The inspector agreed with the council's conclusions and dismissed the appeal. The third appeal decision relates to the erection of a boundary wall following the removal of an existing hedge at 133 Farnborough Road. This was refused under delegated powers because of its harm to the visual appearance of the street scene, along with the characters of the surrounding area. The inspector disagreed with the council, concluding that the wall would appear acceptable and allowed the appeal. The fourth appeal was for the erection of a detached dwelling with a detached garage, along with the garage to serve the existing dwelling at 8 Kiln Lane. Members will note that we have a subsequent application on this site that will be presented to you later this evening. This was refused by committee because of the impact on the adjoining occupiers in terms of its overbearing and intrusive impact. The inspector disagreed with the council, concluding that the proposal would not harm the adjoining occupiers. However, he dismissed the appeal because the legal agreement to secure a contribution towards Farnham Park Sang did not meet the legislative tests, and as such, the proposal would not avoid the likely significant effects on the SPA. The fifth and sixth appeals were both for certificates of lawfulness applications for two-storey extensions at Keeper's Cottage. These were both refused under delegated powers because the council did not consider that the proposal met the requirements of the general permitted development order. The inspector agreed with the council and dismissed these appeals. The seventh and eighth appeals both relate to the erection of a dwelling at Free Stars Road. Members again will note that we also have an application at this site that will be presented to you this evening. The inspector concluded that the site would be an acceptable location for new housing, and both the schemes would result in limited harm to the semi-rural character of Free Stars Road, but overall would appear acceptable. The proposal would also have an acceptable impact on the adjoining occupiers. He dismissed the first appeal, as the legal agreement to secure a contribution towards Farnham Park Sang did not meet the legislative tests, and as such, the proposal would not therefore avoid the likely significant effect on the SPA. However, the second appeal met the relevant tests, and as such, this appeal was allowed. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Louise. I should have introduced the officers at the table in front of me a little earlier. Can I just point out that Erica Scarlett, a member of our legal team at the far right, Elizabeth Sims, head of planning, Louise Yandle, Rachel Callas and Amy Radford. So, sorry, I forget that earlier on. So, item seven, Thames Basin Heathland Special Protection Area, again, Louise Yandle.
Thank you, chairman. Members will note on the table on the third page in your agenda that it states that the unallocated capacity at Farnham Park Sang is at 158 dwellings. At the joint planning committee last night, members resolved to grant planning permission for 96 dwellings at the Walmead site in Farnham. Forty-five of these 96 dwellings had already been taken into consideration in the unallocated figure when prior approval was granted in 2015 for 45 dwellings. As such, the additional approved dwellings has resulted in the unallocated capacity reducing by 51 units, from 158 to 107. No other additional dwellings that rely on Farnham Park Sang have been granted since the publication of the agenda. There is therefore sufficient capacity to accommodate tonight's items should members resolve to grant permission. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Louise. councillor Fraser.
Yes, chairman, I do have a question regarding Sang, but it's a question that is common to all three of the applications that we have before us this evening. So would you prefer me to pose my question now, or with the first of the applications?
I think we have to hear it now. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of you please correct me if I get my facts wrong, but I understand that among the points that were at question with the appeals, one common element was the provision of Sang. In that the phrase was used was provision of Sang, and each of the inspectors noted that this was not in accordance with the CIL Regulations 123, in that, in providing Sang, the untenth Sang provision for Farnham Park, Waverley had exceeded five, that being under CIL 123, the limit of the Sang provision for any one area of Sang. Subsequently, I've noticed that the application wording has been changed, on the advice of council, which must have cost Waverley quite a bit, to maintenance and enhancement of Sang. And then, like magic, Bristol presumably, accepted. I find it incomprehensible that those that drafted the CIL provisions, clause 123, did not see this coming. Could it be, I ask you, that the council advice given to Waverley is wrong? And if we submitted to Bristol, there will be an equal council advising the panjandham planning in Bristol, that in fact, Waverley's got it wrong. And you have broken CIL 123, and you need to think again. Rather than change the wording, you rather run rings around the regulations. The people are the same, the buildings are the same, the application's the same, the money is the same, the section 106 contribution is everything the same.
Yeah.
The only thing that's changed is the wording.
Yeah. Can I ask Erica to respond, please?
Thank you, chairman. councillor Fraser, the council got legal opinion from a council, and he actually looked at the act and how the legislation, how it's drafted, and unfortunately, the drafters didn't quite capture everything that they could possibly capture in terms of maintenance provision. So there is a loophole, which of course, a lot of councils are taking advantage of, but the inspectors accept that maintenance and just enhancement, it's not actually increasing the land, so to speak. So it's not the provision of new Sang, it's just maintenance of existing, so that's why it doesn't fall within the pooling restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, clear answer.
Thank you. May I come back? Has this been checked with Bristol?
No, no, I think, John, we must move on. Erica's answered your question, we've had council's opinion, and that's where we are. Thank you. Okay. It has been checked. It's inspected by the inspector. Yeah, thank you. Are members content to note that update, please? Thank you very much. Applications for planning permission, should there be any site visits necessary, they'll take place on the 2nd of August at a time to be agreed. Let's move on then to item A1, WA 2016 oblique 0795. This is item A1, erection of a dwelling together with a garage and associated works at land at the end of the cul-de-sac north-west side, Three Stars Lane, Farnham. Rachel, would you like to take us through this application, please?
Yes, thank you, chairman. This application site, you will have heard previously, has been the subject of two recent appeal decisions. The current proposal is identical to application WA 2015 0386. That application was dismissed, that appeal, with the sole reason for dismissing that being concern with the legal agreement submitted to mitigate the effect on the Thames Basin SPA. The acceptability of the proposed dwelling has therefore been established, and the sole reason for dismissing that appeal, the effect on the SPA, has now been appropriately mitigated through a new legal agreement. Turning to the application site and the plans, this is the location plan, and you'll see the site outlined in dark red. The site comprises an open plot measuring 0.3 hectares and is located on the northern side of Free Stars Road. The site contains a field shelter at the far northern end, and its boundaries comprise low-level fencing and hedging with a five-bar gate on the southern side and entrance. Here again, you'll see the application site outlined in red. This plan illustrates some of the constraints that apply to the application site. You'll see it is located outside of the developed area, which is the thick green line just here. It is located within the area of great landscape value and is also located within countryside beyond the green belt. Turning now to the proposed block plan, permission is sought for the construction of a detached dwelling and garage and associated works. The proposed dwelling would be positioned 11 metres from the side boundary with number 29, and 4.3 metres from the north-east side boundary. These are the proposed elevations you'll see on screen. The application dwelling would have a ridge height of 7.9 metres, depth of 9.2 metres and 13 metres in width. These are the proposed floor plans. You'll see it provides five bedrooms split over two stories. This is the proposed detached garage. I now take you through some existing photographs of the site. This is looking into the application site, and that's the existing entrance. This is taken from within the application site, looking towards the nearest neighbouring dwelling, that's number 29, and you'll note the central windows which look over the application These two photos look towards the northern side of Free Stars Road and along that road. And this looks towards the end of Free Stars Road, where the application site is on the The application form, in terms of the dwelling proposed, is exactly the same as the proposal subject of the appeal. I'll just briefly take you through the matters of principle and technical opinion. They are the principle of development, the location of development, housing land supply, highway safety and parking, and the effect on the SPA. The matters of judgment are the impact on visual amenity, impact on countryside beyond the green belt and the area of great landscape value, and the impact on residential amenity. As noted, there are two recent appeal decisions relating to the provision of a dwelling on this site. Application 2015 1497 related to provision of a bungalow on site, and that appeal was allowed on the 30th of March. Application WA 2015 0386, as stated, was for an identical scheme as currently proposed. The sole reason for dismissing that appeal was the concern regarding the legal agreement submitted to mitigate the effect on the SPA. The acceptability of the proposed dwelling therefore has been established by these two previous decisions on the site. The sole reason for dismissing that appeal has been addressed. It is therefore concluded, in line with the inspectors' conclusions, that the minor adverse impacts to the AGLV and countryside by way of the introduction of a new dwelling on a currently open site would not outweigh the benefits of the proposal, which include the provision of a new dwelling, an appropriate scale, form and design, and that would be acceptable in terms of residential amenities. If I can now turn members' attention to the update sheet. You'll note there have been a number of letters going back and forth between the neighbouring property and the applicant and agent. Please do not alter the conclusions in the officer report, but some added commentary is provided for you on the update sheet. The recommendation is therefore as set out on page 26 of the agenda report, that subject to conditions 1 to 10 on pages 26 to 29, and informatives 1 to 6 on pages 29 to 30 of the agenda report, that permission be granted. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Rachel. We now move into the public speaking area. Can I just offer a word of advice or warning? Please address your remarks purely on planning matters and not personal attacks on members of the council or councillors themselves. With that, I turn first of all to introduce Mrs. Bell, speak. Mrs. Bell, you have four minutes from when you start speaking. After 30 seconds left to go, there'll be a quick ding on the bell, and there's a warning. Four minutes, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councillors and members of the Western Planning Committee. I'm here today regarding the planning application for a five-bedroom house and separate garage on the land at the end of Three Stars Road. The site in question has been the subject of two recent planning applications, both refused and both appealed. On appeal, the application for this two-story house was dismissed, but the application for a bungalow was allowed, sadly establishing the right to develop this land, notwithstanding that this land is outside of the settlement boundary, in the countryside beyond the green belt and within an area of great landscape value, and subject to planning policy C3 in the Waverley local plan, which states that such land should retain its protected status and that no development should be permitted which harms its natural beauty. The dwelling for which approval is now being sought does not respect or enhance the landscape, but in fact harms the natural beauty of the AGLV. It is of poor design, and should it be built according to this submitted plan, will harm the character and appearance of the countryside. We had hoped that should this precious and irreplaceable land succumb to development, the property of considerable charm and of high quality would be built. As the immediate neighbours to the plot, we fear that our amenity will be considerably threatened by the expanse of brickwork with which we will now be faced. In order to try and mitigate its impact, we requested a meeting with the owners of the plot and suggested an amendment to the plan. Moving the garage further back on the plot would help in concealing some of the bulk and mass of this prominent development from view, both from our property and from the surrounding countryside. They were however unwilling to consider any amendments, citing time constraints as one reason, possibly fearing the completion of a new Waverley local plan which could reinforce the protection previously enjoyed on this land. Indeed, in the last couple of weeks, strong support for the continuing in your committee's refusal of this application is given by Waverley's new local plan currently due to go to council in July. In future appeals, this would be an emerging local plan which would carry greater weight. Policy RE3 of this plan says that the same principles for protection of the AONB will apply in the area of great landscape value, which will be retained for its own sake and as a buffer to the AONB until there is a review of the Surrey Hills AONB boundary. We discuss with Miss Callas the possibility that the committee could stipulate that a detailed planting design to incorporate hedging and boundary treatments, in order that the development can blend in as far as possible with the rural nature of this area of AGLV. In all cases, close-boarded fencing not be permitted and Hawthorn hedging encouraged. Our request for an amendment is not unreasonable, and we ask that the planning committee take this into account in making their decision, which would ease our concerns for objection. We also urge that consideration is taken to the highways report and that strict conditions are placed on any approval. This is particularly important with regard to the removal of permitted development rights. Lastly, I would like to say that we are concerned by comments made by the North West Farnham Residents Association in their objection regarding the classification of this area within the Waverley landscape study. They suggest that the appeals inspector has misidentified this land, which is in fact in area F7. NWFRA have therefore pointed out that it seems clear that the inspector, in looking at the AMEC report, was looking at the wrong area.
Could I ask you to finish, please?
Yeah, okay. We very much hope the committee will share our view that this special piece of land needs special attention to detail, and we thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. Again, so you have four minutes from when you start speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Your officers have undertaken a thorough appraisal of this application in light of the relevant planning policies, the various submissions which have been made. The critical matter is the recent appeal decision at the beginning of this year. Your officers therefore recommend the grant of permission, since there are no grounds to disagree with the planning inspector's decision or her reasoning. The basis of the determination for this application is very straightforward and relies on the weight to be afforded to the recent appeal decisions. One of these granted, permission for the bungalow, whilst the other found the proposal to be acceptable in all respects, aside from the legal agreement. The key point in your officers' report states that the development proposal was found to be acceptable in all respects, aside from this legal agreement. It is said by your officers that significant weight is attached to the appeal decision. The revised approach to the legal agreement is based on that upon which your solicitors sought and obtained council's opinion. This format was found to be acceptable by the planning inspectorate in regard to the bungalow, and it has been replicated for the current proposal. The agreement has been signed by all parties and addresses the inspector's concerns. Contrary to the opinion of some parties, the inspector fully understood the landscape designations and took time to visit the adjoining property, inside and out, and she also walked the public footpaths. On the basis of this very thorough appraisal, the development was found to be acceptable in all but the technicality of the legal agreement. The weight to be afforded to the new local plan will of course be extremely limited until it has reached a very much more advanced stage of preparation. On this basis, I urge you to grant planning permission. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Liddell. Members, I open the discussion to you.
Thank you, thank you, chairman. This is exactly the same application that we as members rejected, whenever it was, a few months ago, nothing has changed at all. We rejected it for good reason. Unfortunately, the inspector didn't agree with our reasoning. I think there is in fact some ambiguity in the inspector's report in terms of the AMEC study and what the AMEC study which Waverley had produced, had undertaken for them. How that reflects it, I have been looking at the AMEC study in detail in connection with the neighbourhood plan, so it's really quite sort of fresh in my mind. And this area is believed to be high sensitivity, and when you look at the definitions of high sensitivity, it says the area is unlikely to be able to accommodate the particular type of change, i.e. the development, without extensive degradation of character and value. Mitigation is unlikely to be able to address potential landscape issues. I think the inspector was in fact referring to something else. I don't think he was actually referring to that in terms of his review of the AMEC study. However, that's one side. I was also a little disappointed in what I heard tonight, and from the officers, that attempts had been made to try and improve the amenity value by moving the garage so that it wasn't a massive brick wall in front of the house, the windows of number 29. I'm just disappointed that the applicant hasn't taken that as an opportunity to improve the design and get along with the neighbours. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Cowan.
Yes, I mean, I think I share much of John Williamson's disappointment over this, that, you know, once again, I feel our hands are tied, it's been made very clear to us that this is identical. I am sorry again that the applicant hasn't just done some of the, what I think would be relatively many details to improve the amenity for number 29. And I was also interested, and I'd like clarity please, on what Mrs. Bell said about boundary treatments, because I would have thought, in particular here, we want not a single bit of fencing, I mean, anything that goes around this has to be porous for wildlife and it has to be beautiful to look at. And I had a quick flick through the conditions, but I didn't see anything quite strong enough to protect the amenity. So if our hands are tied, this is identical and we cannot refuse it without being seen as unreasonable, then at the very least we can do is provide some really strict landscaping, which will not only protect the amenity of number 29, but will also protect the wider area from as much visual harm as we can possibly protect. the wider area from as much visual harm as we can possibly protect.
Thank you. Officers, do you want to come back?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'll just respond to the point about the boundary treatment. Condition nine on your agenda, it says no development shall take place until details of all proposed screen walls or fences or means of enclosure have been submitted to and approved. So that does give us the opportunity to have control over the means of boundary treatment. And if members are minded to do so, we could strengthen that condition to make it clear that close boarded fencing would not be acceptable. Thank you.
Commissioner Corbyn, you want to come back?
I mean, I don't want the word fence in that condition at all. You know, it has to go, it's not an option, so why are we putting it in as an option in the condition? And I think Commissioner Potts wishes to add...
Commissioner Potts.
Yes, one of the other things, and as I say, I think our hands to a certain extent, unfortunately, are very tied. There was mention also by Mrs Bell about the garage and the impact that that's going to have especially. Now, again, can we also do something in terms of the conditions to really, if we are minded to grant it, and I have a feeling that we've got very little choice here, what can we do if the applicant won't actually physically move the garage? What can we do in terms of a condition to, again, try and make sure that that's either screened or something similar to sort of the entire plot, to try and make it at least a little more aesthetically acceptable overall?
Please come back.
Thank you, Chairman. We couldn't require them to physically move the garage, however, what we have got is condition five, which requires a landscaping scheme to be submitted. So what we could look to do is to secure some landscaping between that garage and the boundary of number twenty-nine to provide a sort of visual softening, so to speak. Thank you.
Commissioner Potts.
Thank you, Chairman, if I may come back. I think really what I'm asking for is, can we, again, beef up that condition so that it's not just, you know, oh, here it is. I know we don't like always having to do that, but I think, given the sensitivities here and the fact that we've got very little wriggle room with this whole application, and if we do refuse it, it's going to go straight to an inspector and potentially get passed, if we're looking at the conditions and how strongly we can condition it, can we build something a bit more robust into condition five?
Before we come back, Commissioner Corbyn.
I was just going to say, you know, there's the word mature, mature planting, and that's a perfectly reasonable condition, I'm sure. It's pointless putting in six inch high sort of little bits of hawthorn and waiting twenty-five years. I mean, we're talking here of a blot on the landscape instantly, so we want mature, fast growing. Thank you, Mrs Frost. You know, I'm sure we can put certain words in, native species, and make sure that what we're putting into that condition is strong enough to end up with something that is aesthetically pleasing.
Commissioner Williamson.
Thanks very much, Chairman. Bit of a silly question, but I shall ask it anyway. Would it be quicker and cheaper to put in a fresh application than to go to an appeal? The reason I ask the question is, you know, it would be far better if the garage was moved. I understood that they didn't want to move the garage because of time scales and possible conflicts, putting in a fresh application. But if we rejected this and it went to appeal, wouldn't that take a lot longer and probably cost more money than the applicant just putting in a fresh application with the garage moved?
I rather think it might cost us money, because there is very, very little wriggle room, and I don't believe we can ask them to move the garage. We can indicate we would like it moved further back, and that would have to be an amendment to the planning permission anyway. But Louise.
Members will need to be aware that obviously the inspector's decision is a significant material consideration that they need to take into consideration when making this decision today. If I can also offer you some advice with changing the conditions as well, these conditions are based on the conditions that were attached to the approved scheme, and if you do change them, then it could potentially open the council up to costs at a potential appeal. But what I could suggest is that we could attach informatives onto the permission, sort of advising the applicants what we would expect in both the landscaping condition and the boundary treatment condition, so that when they come to submit their conditions, they know what we would be requiring, and if they don't comply, then we would have reason to refuse those conditions applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. I think you might be drafting those now. Commissioner Frost.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I think we're between a rock and a hard place on this one. I don't like it, I didn't like it before, I still don't like it, I don't want it, I voted against it before, I think it's a very sensitive area, and there is a similar plot opposite it. If you look at the plan that we have in front of us here, on page... I've left my glasses actually in the car, so I'm trying hard, I'm struggling. Look, you see, there's a similar plot opposite. But we are faced with the inspector's decision, but what surprises me is because of the sensitivity of the site, the developer hasn't realised it. He's put in about fences and walls, but hadn't said right at the start, we ought to do something about planting, because that will soften the blow. You know, we are looking at a separate application, we are not looking at the appeal application, albeit this is the same, but as far as I'm concerned, I want to go with the conditions that have been outlined by Commissioner Coburn and Commissioner Potts. This is a sensitive site, and we need to treat it as such, and we're not doing that, or the developer is not doing that. They don't seem to have looked at this in a way of, you know, here is a green field site, it's surrounded by fields, it's outside the developed area, therefore we need to treat this with some sensitivity. They've just con and plonked a five bedroom house on it with the possibility of fencing and walls, and I think that's unacceptable. And I would have hoped that the developer might have actually looked at the garage and said, well, I understand that this is going to cause a problem to the neighbours, and in trying to be neighbourly, we will look at moving that garage. But they don't seem to have done any of that, and that does make me sad, because, you know, as I say, we're between a rock and a hard place. I don't think we're going to have any joy except to grant this application, but I do it with a very heavy heart, and I hope the developer, or the developer's representative who is sitting here tonight, might go away and think about our concerns and think about the people who live there and see what he can do, and he can put in an amendment to the application. That's all he's got to do. He doesn't have to go to appeal or anything, just put in, if we grant it, an amendment to the application that listens to what we're saying. So I hope he's listening tonight. Thank you.
I hope so too, and that would be done under delegated powers, which would make...
It would be closely watched by the rest of us.
Of course it would, yes. So Louise, where are we up to with conditions and informatives, please?
So the specific informatives that I would recommend would be with regards to condition five, the landscaping scheme should include mature landscaping to screen the development and specifically the garage from twenty-nine Freestyles Road. And then a second informative, with regards to condition nine, the boundary treatment should include hedging and not close boarded fencing.
All walls.
All walls, okay, yeah.
Sorry, Commissioner Potts, I beg your pardon.
Can I come back again? I think actually Commissioner Coburn answered the question I was just about to ask. My concern is in all this, that this is an informative, and actually, it seems to me what you're sitting there saying, with all due respect, is it's not really worth the paper it's written on. So what standing does it really have? Please.
Louise.
The informative is as it is, just an informative, however, the control comes when the information is submitted to discharge those conditions, and really the informatives specifically spell out to the applicant and the agent what we would be looking for, and we would be justified in refusing conditions if they didn't meet requirements, if we felt that they would be damaging to the character of the area. So whilst the informative is just that, it does guide the applicant and the agent as to what we would be likely to approve, should a conditions application come in subsequently.
And Louise, this is a pre commencement condition?
The landscaping is prior to the first occupation of the dwelling, and the boundary treatment is a pre commencement condition.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Coburn.
Can I ask for some clarity here, because I'm like Mrs Frost. We're told time after time, this is a brand new application, treat it as a brand new application, look at it afresh, be guided by the, you know, the previous appeal decisions, be guided by policy, all of that, but this is a new application. We don't like it as a committee, we turned it down as a committee, but we're going to accept it because we've been told by the inspectorate that the reasons that we turned it down are unacceptable. But why does that stop us putting on stronger conditions at this point? I really don't see, if we're looking at a new application, as we're always told, why we cannot strengthen conditions at this point.
Elizabeth or Erica? I'm not sure, or both?
If I could start, Chairman, just to say, I think the advice we've given you so far is absolutely correct, that, yes, it's a fresh application, but you need to give very high consideration to the inspector's decision. The inspector allowed one appeal, including conditions, and the applicant would clearly be aware of that, that the inspector didn't require any further wording or strengthening of those conditions in finding the approved scheme acceptable. So if you choose to amend them, you run the risk, if the applicant is not prepared to comply fully with them, he could appeal the conditions again, and we would need on your behalf to defend why the conditions are changed. Now, that's a decision for you as a committee, if you want to take that chance, that your feelings about the site are such that you feel they should be enhanced, and probably a case could be made, but I just think it's important that you realise that it's not that you're starting from scratch with it, you do have to take into account what the inspector found to be acceptable mitigation on the previous appeal, and the wording that was imposed is that which we're recommending in relation to this application. So there is a benchmark in that sense, but if it is your wish, we could enhance the conditions in the way that you're suggesting, and if the applicant's prepared to comply with those, great, good outcome, but if not, you do run the risk that he could appeal the conditions because he doesn't want to actually comply with the intention, notwithstanding clearly your very strong views. I hope that's helpful, but it is a balance that you need to take into account. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Erica.
I just wanted to add, because it's a fresh application, you can impose conditions, but you can't be unreasonable, they still have to meet the test. So even if you deviate slightly from the inspector, as long as it's not unreasonable, it's not putting any additional burdensome requirements on the developers, then I don't really see why he'd go against it. Thank you.
Counselor Potts.
Right, okay, in that case then, my view is that we should do it, because otherwise, what is the point of us having, all sitting here, having looked at this, having read all the papers, having listened to the objectors, having listened to the supporter and the agent and everyone else, we may as well pack up and go home and not waste our time having committees. My view is, and I don't know what my colleagues think, let's actually explain, but we need to be able to justify, and given the site, given its location, given the sensitivities, if we have to pass this application, then let's put some stronger conditions on so that at least it's much more suited to that location in terms of the landscaping.
I think when we were looking at the two previous applications that went to appeal, we didn't really look at the conditions in the way that we're looking at them now. I think we just rejected the proposal and turned away from that, and it's only now that we're looking at the detail of the conditions, that's my personal thought. Commissioner Frost.
Chairman, I think we go for it, because we are not being unreasonable. The fact that it is AGLV land, it is open land, we are not being unreasonable in saying that we want mature planting, and I don't think that the applicant can say we are being unreasonable, and therefore we should put that condition in, because one of the things we had to consider was the impact on the local area and the local people, and I think it would be a greater impact if we have a wall or we have closed boarded fencing there. So I think for us to amend the condition, not change it per se, but amend it, to have mature planting, is not being unreasonable. I hope my colleagues feel the same.
Thank you very much indeed. Commissioner Frost, Commissioner Fraser.
I find myself in the very rare position of agreeing with all three ladies here, in that we have a need... Wonderful. Thank you.
You're here deep hole here.
Yes, I am, I am indeed. But I was minded when I first approached this to say, I disagree, chuck it out, send it back for appeal, and that would have been unreasonable. But I think in trying to mitigate the damage that this development is going to do, the requirement that there be green, mature planting in lieu of close boarded fencing and walls is a very sensible addition, or amendment, as in this case, a change to the condition, and I would like to support that.
Thank you very much indeed, and I'm sure you were not involved in any predetermination in your other thoughts.
Just say, Chairman, I trust I agree with everything that's been said. Can I just ask a question? If we impose conditions, how long do they apply for? What's the time period that the condition applies for?
Louise.
With a landscaping condition, it's generally accepted that this could be maintained for a period of five years, and after then the local authority would have control. However, with the sort of boundary treatment condition, this shall be retained unless otherwise agreed. So should they want to put up different boundary treatment, they would then need to apply for planning permission.
I think we'll move on. Members, no further comments? Officers, no further comments? Right, let's... The amended conditions I'll come to in a moment. The recommendation is permission be granted, subject to conditions one to ten, and informative one to six, plus additional informatives in relation... No, that's not right. In relation to condition five and nine. That's incorrect, so we're going to boost condition five and ten. So the committee requests the condition five and nine be strengthened regarding close boarding fencing and walls not being acceptable, and requirement for soft mature planting. Elizabeth.
Chairman, in the interest of clarity, may I suggest Louise reads out the wording of both those conditions? Thank you, Chairman.
So the first one, condition five, in relation to the landscaping, I suggest the following wording: "Prior to the first occupation of the dwelling hereby permitted, a landscaping scheme shall be submitted to and approved by the local planning authority in writing. This shall include mature landscaping to screen the development and specifically the garage from twenty-nine Freestyles Road." And then the condition carries on as it is set out on page twenty-eight of the agenda. And then also to strengthen the reason, currently the reason says, "In the interest and character amenity of the area," and if we can add into that, "and to protect the amenities of the adjoining occupiers." And with regards to condition nine, which is the... And with regards to condition nine, which is the boundary treatment one, I would suggest that no development shall take place until details of all proposed means of enclosure, which shall include mature hedging and shall exclude closed-boarded fencing or walls, have been submitted to and approved in writing by the local planning authority. And then it carries on as it is. And again, I would suggest the same reason, in the interest of the character amenity of the area, and to protect the amenities of the adjoining occupiers in accordance with policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan. Thank you.
Permission be granted, subject conditions one to ten as amended, and informatives one to six on pages twenty-six, thirty, permission be granted. Can I have chef hands those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Those against? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Permission therefore is granted. We move on now to item A2, WA 2016 oblique zero eight two six. Erection of a dwelling and detached garage following demolition of the existing garages and sunroom as amended by further information received on the seventeenth of June 2016 at land at eight Kiln Lane, Lowerborne, GU103LR. Amy, yours to introduce, please.
Thank you, chairman. Okay. This is the location plan for the site. The site measures naught point naught seven hectares, and is located to the west of Kiln Lane. It comprises an area of lawn, which is currently associated with eight Kiln Lane. This property is also known as Kiln Farmhouse. The existing building is an undesignated heritage asset. The proposed access driveway leads from the site to the residential cul-de-sac of Winston Walk, which lies to the south. And the overriding pattern...
So, chairman, can I just stop once? It's quite difficult to hear. Are you close to the microphone?
Yes.
It is.
Yes. The overriding pattern of development surrounding the site is residential, but the area retains the semi-rural and well-treed character, which is common to the Bourne area of Farnham. So we move on to the aerial photos. These show the site as an open area of garden, associated with number eight Kiln Lane, and a protected band of trees can be seen to the west, and the proposed access to the south. So this is the block plan. This shows the proposed dwelling would be positioned centrally within the site. Outbuildings to the east would be removed, and a single bay garage erected. Additional parking spaces would be available on the proposed driveway, and the proposal includes engineering works, which would lower the levels of the site, and therefore lower the relative height of the new dwelling. Surrey County Council highways have assessed the proposal and have raised no objection, and a condition is requested by them for a construction management plan, and this would form part of any permission. Here are the proposed elevations. The design of the proposed dwelling is considered to be broadly in keeping with the Surrey vernacular, and it would not be materially out of scale with other properties in the surrounding area. It would have three bedrooms, and the accommodation would as a whole meet the requirements of the government's technical housing standards. This plan shows the relationship of the proposed new dwelling with Kiln Farmhouse and number three Winston Walk. So the land levels would be lowered, you can see indicated here, by approximately one point two metres, to accommodate the new dwelling and set it lower down. The ridge height would be three point five metres higher than that of three Winston Walk, and the eaves height would sit at the same height as the ridgeline of three Winston Walk. The eaves height of the proposed dwelling would sit just below the ridge height of Kiln Farmhouse. And the proposed dwelling would be fifteen metres from Kiln Farmhouse, fourteen and a half metres from the rear elevation of three Winston Walk, and thirty metres from the rear elevations at four and six Kiln Lane. So this proposal was previously submitted under application WA 2014-2237, and the new proposal is for the same dwelling, access and detached garage. The difference is that it no longer includes woodland to the west, which can be seen here, and here no longer included. And it also does not propose to erect an additional detached garage which would serve Kiln Farmhouse. The previous application was refused and dismissed at appeal. However, the principle of the development and its impact on neighbouring dwellings was found to be acceptable by the inspector. The appeal was dismissed due to the technical considerations we've already discussed tonight, associated with the pooling of contributions to the Thames Basin Heeds SPA. The application under consideration now includes the submission of a unilateral undertaking for the ongoing maintenance and enhancement of sand at Farnham Park, which is considered to suitably mitigate harm to the SPA and overcome the reason for dismissal at appeal. Here are some site photos. So these show the relationship between the site and Kiln Farmhouse, which would retain a good proportion of its original land and ancillary buildings. Officers consider that in this case, the less than substantial harm to this heritage asset would be outweighed by the benefit of the new dwelling. These site photos show the relationship between the site and neighbouring dwellings. So clockwise from top left shows the view from the site towards four and six Kiln Lane, then the view from the site along the proposed access which leads to Winston Walk, and then the view from the site to the top of the roof at three Winston Walk. Within the appeal decision for the previous application, the inspector concluded that the proposed dwelling would not be harmful to the living conditions of the occupiers of neighbouring residential dwellings. So the proposal is considered to be of an appropriate form, and would not cause harm to the character of the area. The lessens of substantial harm to the setting of Kiln Farmhouse would be outweighed by the benefit of the new dwelling, and the proposal would not result in material harm to the amenities of neighbouring occupiers. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, development of garden land, housing land supply, impact to heritage, trees, highways issues, flood risk and biodiversity, as well as the impact upon the SPA. Aside from this impact to the SPA, no concerns were raised by the inspector with regard to these issues in the appeal decision. The revised application is considered to overcome the concern regarding the SPA. The matters for members' judgment are the impact of visual amenity, the impact to residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and amenity space. The principle of the acceptability of the proposal with regard to these issues has been established by the appeal decision. Finally, I'd like to draw members' attention to the update sheet, where additional information can be found regarding the submission of the 106 agreement, some comments from Surrey County Council regarding highways, the impact to biodiversity, and an amendment to condition eighteen, which also concerns biodiversity. Members should note that the recommendation A has been updated, and that recommendation B should be deleted. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Amy. So again, we turn to public speaking, and I'll ask Jackie De Silva to step forward. And you have four minutes, as you've seen before. Thank you.
Firstly, the objectors would like to specifically refer to the application, and state that on the following the applicant has ticked no, and yet the appropriate response should have been in the affirmative. Point six, a creation of a right-of-way would be required. Point seven, land forming part of the applicant's title is barely two point three metres wide, and to get access to this, a ninety-degree angle over a private road, i.e. Winston Walk, needs to be encountered. Access to the proposed property is not viable via Winston Walk. Refuge collection would not be possible, nor would access for emergency services. The development is within twenty metres of the Bourne stream. Point fifteen, all the trees in the immediate vicinity do have TPOs on. The inspector on the previous appeal decision for exactly the same proposal under 2237 recorded that the proposed dwelling would be significantly taller than the host property, numbers two, three and four Winston Walk. All of those property... Sorry, two, three and four are bungalows. The fourteen objectors to this proposal concur with the inspector's findings. The proposed dwelling, by reason of its proximity to neighbouring properties and overall height, an elevated position would result in an overbearing and intrusive development, which would materially harm the amenities of the adjacent occupiers in conflict with council policies and statutory regulations. It would constitute an overprominent and inappropriate element in the street scene. The applicant has attempted to mitigate the significant height differential by stating that they will excavate by a minimum of naught point seven metres. However, this is of little value, when the proposed dwelling would stand three point five metres above all properties in the immediate vicinity. The distance from the rear elevations of the proposed dwelling are not within the guidelines, there only being eight point five metres between three Winston Walk and the boundary, and seven point two metres between the south elevation and the boundary. The distances referred to, referred to distances to the other properties in Kiln Lane, not the rear elevations. The applicant has outlined in red on the plan the land within their ownership, and of course, the subject of the planning application. However, the objectors point out that there is no means of access included within the plan. There is no access route to the proposed dwelling. The route of access to get to the development is not within the red line. The applicant cannot demonstrate a route of access in viable terms from the public highway to the proposed dwelling. The applicant states that the access is to be gained over Winston Walk. However, Winston Walk is a privately owned road, maintained at the expense of the five owners and occupiers of that land, and the landowners do not permit access over Winston Walk to gain access to a new development. Statutory planning regulations require notice to be served on the five private landowners as access is proposed over a private road. No notice has been received, and therefore the application is not validated. The height measurements are not provided on the application for the garage. This materially affects number four Winston Walk and numbers four and six Kiln Lane, and is a material planning consideration. In the report, in the inspector's report and comments, some of them are contradictory. It is stated that no construction access should be via Winston Walk, but then it's stated that no damage should occur to the beach hedges in Winston Walk. It's stated that access over Winston Walk is a private matter, but then they go on to give judgement and opinion that access to one more dwelling doesn't materially affect any of the owners of the land making up Winston Walk. Winston Walk is a private road. It's maintained at the cost of the landowners, and the access to the proposed dwelling via this route is not viable or not permitted. The proposal must fit within the character of the area. It does not, and is not therefore worthy of recommendation. Winston Walk is made up of five bungalows that will sit three point five metres below this proposal. The scheme must be policy compliant and represent good development. It's not compliant nor good development, and must be refused.
Thank you very much. De Silva. Turning now to the supporter, Janet Long.
Good evening councillors. I'm here to speak in support of the application proposal for the erection of a single detached dwelling on the land. As members are aware, this is a resubmission following the appeal decision on a previously refused application. In determining that appeal, the inspector concluded the proposal would not result in any harm to neighbouring amenity. In his report, he states, I therefore conclude that the proposed dwelling would not be harmful to the living conditions of neighbouring occupiers. Consequently, it would accord with the provisions of policies D1 and D4 of the local plan. Furthermore, he went on to say, in addition, it would accord with paragraph seventeen of the NPPF, which seeks to ensure that development delivers high-quality design and a good standard of amenity. These comments make clear that the inspector considered the development of a new house on the plot to be acceptable. As you are aware, the only reason the appeal was refused centred on the inspector's concerns that the development would be harmful to the Thames Basin SPA, as the form of mitigation proposed did, in his opinion, breach the government's requirements relating to SIL regulations. In the light of this comment, and as set out in the officer's report, and as already debated, the form of the section 106 agreement has been amended to address the inspector's concerns. The applicant has signed the updated agreement and believes that the requirements of the council relating to SIL have been lawfully addressed. Accordingly, it is considered that the reason given for refusing to grant permission has been overcome. To conclude therefore, in the light of the inspector's comments confirming the development can be undertaken without causing harm to the wider setting and any neighbouring amenity, it is considered there is no good reason why planning permission cannot now be granted. We'd be grateful if you can take these comments into account in your determination this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, open to you. Councillor Hill.
I just wondered if the officers could take us back to the slide with the showing the height of the proposed building? We don't have that in our pack. And then just explain maybe what's going on in there again, because I really don't quite understand that.
So the ridge height of the proposed dwelling would be three metres higher than the host property.
That's the bottom one.
Sorry. This is the host property, and this is the proposed dwelling, and it is three metres higher than the host property which is positioned here. That is three Winston Walk. That's the land level. A bank. It's a bank forming the boundary. If we just take you back to the photograph, we can show you that.
Councillor Frost.
Thank you, chairman. Notwithstanding what the inspector has said, I believe this is too high in relation to the other properties. The fact that there is no formal access to it, I always thought in planning terms was irrelevant. Because if somebody wanted to build a house in my back garden, they could apply for planning permission, and it could be granted, but then they have to negotiate with me as to whether I will allow them access to it. Now, can you just confirm that? Because the whole thing to do with the access which is owned by the five properties, it's up to them to decide if they want to give it.
Just before you come in, Louise, just adding, Councillor Frost, that private road, is it private? Is it registered under the land registration to those properties? And therefore they have right to deny access? Or is it like many of the roads around Surrey, private roads that are maintained by people but have no legality? All yours.
Thank you, chairman.
With regards to the first point, your understanding is absolutely correct. With regards to the second point, we don't actually know who owns that piece of land because it's not within the application site. However, it would be up to the developer to negotiate that with the landowner.
Please do.
I just think that the proposal in relation to the bungalows that are there, and this nine-metre differential in the eaves height, I think it's too overbearing and too big for that site, quite frankly. And the point that you can't get refuse vehicles down there is something we have to take into account.
Thank you, Councillor Frost. Councillor Story.
Thank you, chairman. Actually, councillor Frost made exactly the point that I was going to about access.
Councillor Coburn.
Yes, if I could come back in on this. Can you show us some more of the pictures of the Bourne, please? Lots of trees, lots of hills. I mean, Kiln Lane is one of the steepest hills in the area. It goes, I mean, you know, I don't know what the one in whatever is, but can you have a nicer picture than this? I don't like this one. Picture with green, please. Right, that's what we're dealing with, right? This is what we're dealing with, Kiln Farm. That's the access, which has obviously been used more than it used to be, if that's it, because at one time it was completely overgrown, so I think there's been a bit of driving up and down. To me, I just can't understand the inspector on this one. I really can't. The land is so much higher than the bottom of Kiln Lane. I mean, there's nothing the owner could do about that, it's just a fact. I can't stress how steep Kiln Lane is. If anyone's been down there on a sledge and ended up in the water at the bottom, you know, it is so, so steep. It's probably about the steepest one. So anything at the top is much, much higher than anything at the bottom, and so all the way down. So you've got here a house on a raised piece of land anyway, you've got bungalows that are being affected on one side, but you've also got other properties that lie beneath it on Kiln Lane round the corner. It's just the way the land works. It's just the way the land works. And so to say that something this tall, you know, is actually acceptable when it stands proud on this piece of land, taller than the host property, um, miles taller than the bungalows, and I can't believe it's not going to have an overlooking effect in Kiln Lane, the houses round the corner. Um, I just find it quite extraordinary and, you know, we've got plenty. When we did our sign for Lower Bourne, we did that ridge at the back of that picture. It's just what we have the whole time, sort of ridges full of trees. We'd need a heck of a lot of trees to screen this one, I tell you. Mature wouldn't even touch it.
I would ask councillor Coburn to enlarge upon her descent of Kiln Lane on sledge. Notwithstanding, notwithstanding that point, I think it, from a practical point of view, and you're probably going to tell me this is no planning issue, I think being so close to the Bourne stream, it is unwise to lower the land level by point seven of a metre in order to site the house lower. It's not just the flood risk from the stream, it is also the flow of groundwater. They could be inundated with groundwater coming down the hill towards the stream. This is a very poor decision on part of the plan of the designers, that you're going to tell me it's nothing to do with the planners. Its building is clearly far too high for its neighbours and I'm amazed that we're getting planning by inspectors from Bristol that overlook these fundamental issues. And we should find some means of resisting without being unreasonable.
Thank you councillor Fraser.
Thank you councillors. And I would just like to remind you that obviously the inspector's decision is a significant material consideration and the application was almost identical to the scheme that was only dismissed on the technicality in relation to the SPA legal agreement. The only differences are, is that the site area is slightly smaller and excludes an area of woodland and a garage that was proposed for the existing dwelling is now no longer included in the scheme. And in particular, in the appeal decision, the inspector does acknowledge that the dwelling would be higher. And he says the proposed dwelling would have a floor level some one point five metres higher than the host property. Moreover, the ridge height of the proposed dwelling would be approximately three metres higher than the host property. Whilst he accepts that these dimensions are significant, he also acknowledges that separation distances between the retrospective north and south facing elevations of the two properties would be fifteen metres. And he goes on to conclude that the proposed dwelling would not be harmful to the living conditions of the occupiers of neighbouring residential dwellings. And this is something that we must take into consideration when making your determination today. Thank you councillors.
Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much, chairman. This isn't the same application as the one before. The officer has just said that. The change is, is it's a smaller site than the previous application. The garage has changed, that's been taken out of it. So it, it is not the same application as the previous one that the inspector commented on. Therefore, we can treat this, in my view, as a completely different application. If the site is reduced and an area of woodland is taken out of it, whereas before the woodland made it all sort of very countrified, et cetera, if it is a smaller site, that makes the house more imposing because it's so big than it did before. So why is it we cannot treat this as a separate application?
Elizabeth Sims.
Just to clarify, chairman, um, it is a fresh application, but the test is, and we do try to make this clear in our reports, that when you're comparing an application with a previous decision, you have to take it into account and particularly have regard to any changes in circumstances. And the differences between the two schemes clearly are changes in circumstances. So if your decision can be grounded in those differences to the, the point at which it reasonably changes the decision, then, then you can take it into account. But you'd have to make a very strong case that those, those differences between the two schemes do actually result in a decision that makes the previous inspector's decision no longer valid. And I just offer that to you as a sort of theoretical basis because to say the scheme's changed, therefore we're starting from scratch, um, isn't quite accurate. You have to just regard what those changes are in terms of making a fresh decision. It's a difficult one. I know it's not palatable when you've previously refused a scheme, but that's, that's the nature of our system, that an inspector's decision is highly material and will be expected to have been taken into account by a subsequent inspector. And so I hope that's helpful. Thank you.
Mrs. Sims. But if you look at that plan up there, the site is substantially smaller. If you look at the previous scheme and you look at the red dotted line, there is a lot of land there. So you've got this imposing house on a big plot. If you look at the current scheme, you have got an imposing house on a small plot. Can you see where I'm coming from here? And does that suggest that the other bit that's been divorced and cut off is perhaps going to be put in planning application for another house? I don't really know, but it does seem to me this is substantially different from the previous scheme by virtue of the small piece of land that house is sitting on. And I still think that house is too big for that plot, bearing in mind the bulk, bulk and mass of it. I, I hadn't realised just how much, I, I was under the impression it was a slightly smaller site. It's not, it's a substantially smaller site.
Q please. It's not a public meeting. This is not a public meeting, sir. Louise.
If I can just make some comments with regards to the nature of this land. Um, this is very steeply sloping land which is heavily wooded, um, so wouldn't have formed part of sort of usable amenity space, um, that would be part of the dwelling. And also this land is covered by a tree protection order, so the trees are protected. Thank you.
Any last questions or any last officer comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry councillor Fraser.
Are we once more between a rock and a hard place on this one? Is it the inspector in Bristol who is on his own designing houses for us and we are not given sufficient, in my opinion, sufficient weight in the decision-making process?
I think we're wasting our time.
Elizabeth, if you want to come in. Erica.
Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Potts.
Well, to my mind, I actually don't think we're wasting our time because regardless of the fact that the, the, a lot of the land on the previous scheme was woodland that is TPO'd or whatever, the fact is that there is a significant reduction in the size of the plot. And you can, you can say whatever you like about what sit, was sitting on the, on that particular section that is now being removed, but the fact is, it's significantly smaller. It's not a little bit smaller, it's significantly smaller. It changes the scheme, as far as I'm concerned, changes the scheme to a point that I don't feel able to support what's before me tonight.
Excuse me, Erica.
Thank you, chair. Um, I completely agree with Elizabeth Sims. It is really a matter for members. Um, what I would say is that the inspector would have probably taken into account the whole woodland and, you know, the size of the plots, not incorporating the woodland. So there is a risk that we'd refuse the application going and the inspector will come to the same conclusion about the height of the house. Because if he believes that the height is the same as the previous scheme, then I believe it's a gamble really. It's a difficult one to, to call.
It's a judgment call.
It is.
Councillor Coburn.
It is a judgment call, but there are a hundred and one, if not more, plots in the Bourne which have amenity space and woodland, ours has it. It's the way the, the houses have been built into the, into the woodland and the point is that we don't destroy the woodland. So, you know, an awful lot of gardens have woodland, a woodland area in their garden. So as far as I'm concerned, it would not be unusual to have a, you know, as I say, a house with, with that amount of woodland as part of its garden. So, you know, we are dealing with the Bourne here and, you know, it is a well wooded area, that's the point. So, you know, I can understand when people say, you know, this is a much smaller site and it's a site that for that size of house is maybe inappropriate, whereas, you know, adding in the woodland, it, it made it much more typical of the area. So, you know, I think there's quite a, a good argument for saying this site is, is greatly changed by, with this application.
Councillor Potts.
No, just to really emphasise what councillor, um, Coburn has said, as far as I'm concerned, it's a matter of judgment and to my judgment, the plot and has changed significantly with the change in size. And as I, it, it's a no brainer. It has changed and it's changed significantly.
Thank you. Members, I think it's time to move to the recommendation. The recommendation is that permission be granted subject to conditions one to twenty one and informative one to five on pages fifty two to fifty nine. May have those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please show.
Uh, that's none.
Those against?
Uh, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Therefore, we need a proposer, seconder and alternative recommendation and reasons for. Councillor Frost.
Chairman, I recommend that we go for refusal on the grounds of the scale and size of the property in relation to a smaller defined site. If you want to add anything to that, perhaps somebody can, I haven't got my local plan with me, so I can't go to the policies.
I would just, um, recommend that members take it a little step further whilst recognising the change, which I think you've, you've emphasised, an inspector would expect you to identify what harm that change causes. So you'll be able to point out this is different to the previous decision and you will say, yes, it's fine, it's a smaller plot, but clearly you should only be refusing permission if it's causing material harm. So I would recommend you add something on to the end of that to say that that, that change with the smaller plot creates harm. Um, and is that harm to character? Is it harm to amenity? Um, but that would actually, um, support your, your argument that this is different to the previous scheme. So it depends what member's conclusion is in terms of the impact of that change, what harm is it causing.
Isn't it harm to the amenity of those surrounding properties, mainly the, the single story, the bungalows?
To keeping with the immediate vicinity because it's a big house and we've got bungalows. So in fact, it does materially harm the people who live there already.
It's a five bedroom property which will have probably more than one car as well. Just imagine. Yeah, we, we need a seconder as well. Councillor Frost has proposed, councillor Potts has seconded. Yes, please.
And we would suggest the proposal by reason of its size and sighting in relation to the size of the plot would be out of keeping with the amenity of the vicinity and harmful to the amenity of the area in conflict with policies D one, D three, sorry, D four and BE three of the Waverley Borough Local Plan.
Thank you very much Louise. So we have a recommendation, a seconder for refusal. Can I have those in favour of refusal, please show?
Um, yeah, unanimous.
Thank you very much indeed. So permission is refused on that one. Thank you, members.
For those who are interested, it's nil-nil.
Thank you. That's half time. Did Murray win?
Did Murray win?
Yeah, I think we're all right. Yeah. Can we move on then to item A three? Erection of a dwelling at land at seven and nine Pine Ridge Drive, Lower Bourne. Rachel to introduce this one, please.
Thank you, chairman. Here on screen you'll see the application site outlined in red. The site is located to the south east of Pine Ridge Drive. There is an increase in levels from Pine Ridge Drive, that's this road just here, to the rear of the site and the boundary with number twenty five Long Down Road, which is this property just here. Here you will see Lee proposed site plan. Permission is sought for the erection of a new detached four bedroom, two storey dwelling together with a new vehicular access off Pine Ridge Drive and hard standing providing parking to the front and side of the proposed dwelling. The dwelling would be of an L shape and would include a two storey projection to the rear, that's just here, and a single storey side extension or projection, just here. I'll now take you through the proposed elevations. I have included some comparison plans here and these relate to our previous appeal decisions on this site which were allowed on appeal and I'll come back to that in slightly more detail in just a moment for you. These are the proposed, a comparison of the two block plans and the main difference to point out here is the addition of this two storey element on the rear of the building. Turning now to the elevations, you'll see that the proposed height of the dwelling remains the same as that scheme we've previously seen at appeal, at seven point seven two metres. Again, the change is the rear two storey projection and that's this element you can see on the east elevation just here. Turning to the south and west elevations, again, you'll, you'll see the same points. On the right hand side of the screen, you'll see the west elevation and that illustrates the two storey element just here, which is a key change from that previous, those previous plans. Here you'll see the proposed ground and first floor plans. You'll see that the addition of this rear store, rear two storey element allows an enlarged living room and an additional bedroom at first floor level. I'll now take you through some site photographs. This is taken from the rear of the site within number twenty five Long Down Road. So here at the bottom of the site, that is Pine Ridge Drive and the fencing you'll see contains the site itself. This is a view now from within the site, this time looking towards Long Down Road, so Pine Ridge behind. And you'll see they have started to form a driveway in connection with that previous scheme allowed on appeal. We now look along Pine Ridge Drive and this will be the proposed entrance to the site, which you'll see on the left. At the moment, you've got some construction fencing along there. I'll now take you through some of the determining issues for this application. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, highway safety and parking, the effect on the SPA and the housing land supply. Turning to the matters of judgment, they are the impact on visual amenity and also the area of special environmental quality, that's policy BE three in your local plan and that includes the impact on trees. And the second, impact on residential amenity. Planning permission has been previously granted for a new detached dwelling on the site and that's under reference WA twenty twelve, twenty nineteen. Subsequently and more recently, a section seventy three application varying the construction method of the proposed dwelling. of the proposed dwelling, effectively lowering it into the ground, was submitted and granted again on appeal under reference WA 2015/2114. Both those applications are highly material in establishing the principle of a new detached dwelling on-site. The key difference in this case between the previously approved applications and the current scheme is the addition of that two-storey rear projection, which would add a fourth bedroom. Officers have concluded that this change would not warrant reaching a different decision to that previously made on appeal. The proposal is considered to be acceptable in visual terms, there'll be no additional tree loss as a result of that change, and it would not have any greater impact on neighbouring amenity, and is considered to preserve the special environmental quality of the area. If I could briefly now turn your attention to the update sheet. You'll just see a few corrections there in terms of some dimensions on the site, and it also sets out the recommendation, which remains as set out on page 75 of the agenda report. Let permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 13 and informative 1 to 3 on pages 75 to 79 of the agenda report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Rachel. There are no members to speak publicly, so members, it's all down to you, councillor MacLeod.
If I can refer to the appeal that Rachel referred to, that had a condition, condition eight, that no extension, building a hard subject would be constructed within the curpage of the dwelling house permitted. If we approve this application, this will result in a footprint being significantly larger than the previous application, and it will effectively be countermanding that condition, it will be allowing an extension by another means. So it seems to me that we shouldn't be allowing this, because it seems to be a way of trying to get round a condition imposed on the successful appeal.
Rachel.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the question. I suppose to provide some more detail on why we put that condition on and why inspectors put that condition on, it's really a means of gaining control over future extensions. It prevents them undertaking extensions without coming in to us for planning permission. What it doesn't necessarily mean is that future extensions would be, that all future extensions would be harmful, but it ensures that they have to come in to us and we have to consider it in terms of the impact on the character of the area. In this case, obviously, the BE3 policy is particularly relevant, and we'd be particularly looking at the impact on trees or any additional impacts on trees created by that extension. The views that officers have taken in this case is that actually it's positioned to the rear, and there wouldn't be any additional tree loss as a result of the extension. So we have come to the conclusion in this case that that additional area would be acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Councilwoman.
Could I just ask, please, Chairman, if the additional land that was acquired is shown in the plan in our paperwork? Or has that been added on since?
Yes, your report is correct in terms of the site error, it was just a typographical error in terms of putting those measurements in, that wasn't picked up, apologies for that.
Councilwoman Fraser.
This is an example I submit of planning approval by stealth. If this plan had been submitted months ago as edition one, it would not have got permission. The first plan took account of the proximity of the trees and sighted the building on mini piles. Then they went back and thought about it, decided to chop down the one tree immediately adjacent, dropped the house into a dish, put in standard foundations, which severs all the roots in the vicinity. Now they've decided that, oh, whoops, another bedroom would be nice, let's come back and get the other bedroom. Backs and forwards. And they've got a house now, possibly, subject to our decision tonight, that they would not have got had they submitted it originally. It is planning by stealth, and we're allowing ourselves to cooperate with it.
And councillor Fraser, I don't think there are any trees left on that site though now. Councillor Frost, yeah?
So I don't think there are any trees left. Can you just... The red line that you've got, is that the site? Or not that one, the one around the house? As you come in the driveway, right, you've got some red lines, what do they represent? Is that the plot?
Is it this curved line just here you're referring to?
I'm referring to, if you, that's it, all of that?
Yeah, so that's denoting the area of hard standing that's going to surround the house. The actual red site line is this thinner line here which goes around the edge.
Right, so the one around the edge is the total sum of the site.
Correct.
The other red line shows the hard standing. Right, thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
Councillor Fraser, you want to come back?
I want to come back, looking at the plans that aren't submitted here very carefully. That inner red line is the dishing into which the house and the parking will be placed. It's below the existing ground level. And once again, although this thing is on a hilltop, I think it's the most unwise thing to do by way of collecting groundwater, but that doesn't seem to be a planning issue.
Okay. Don't think there is one. There isn't one. Sorry, councillor MacLeod.
I sort of agree with councillor Fraser, actually, that to my mind, a condition is a condition, it's just not something that should be so easily overruled, that when the inspector put the condition on, there shouldn't be an extension, that condition should be complied with. And this, councillor Fraser, is just a way of getting round things. I'm not happy with it at all.
Erica.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a fresh application, as far as I understand it, it's not an application to remove that condition, so you'd have to look at this application for what it is in front of you.
I totally understand that, but it has the effect of removing that condition, of overruling that condition or ignoring that condition.
The planning permission they've already got?
Yes.
Sorry, councillor Frost.
I'm sorry, that was rude of me. Of a planning permission they've already got, because the site of the previous application they got on... So they can build that anyway, it's whether we think the addition of the extra bit is just a step too far. Personally, I think it is.
Elizabeth, did you want to come in? Oh, sorry. Councillor MacLeod, you want to come back?
Yeah, I'd just ask Elizabeth to what extent she feels we'll be able to defend this appeal, because that's always a consideration, isn't it? I think we should refuse it, but I think we should always bear in mind your advice.
Louise.
Members need to make their judgement upon the differences between this scheme and the extant permission, reminding you obviously the extant permission is a material consideration, and bearing in mind that the differences is just this two-storey projection here. If members felt that this particular element, the additional element, is harmful in some way, then you would have justification in refusing the application. However, if it is not this element of the extension that's harmful, and you're looking back at what you perhaps considered in the original applications which the inspector disagreed at, I would caution you against that. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Louise. Are we done? I think? In which case, let me get the paperwork out. The recommendation is permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 13, informative 1 to 3 on pages 75 to 79. Those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please show.
One, two, three.
Those against?
One, two, three, four.
Abstentions? No, seven. Thank you, therefore we need an alternative proposal. Reasons for, and a second, please. Councillor Fraser.
I would like to propose that we decline to approve this application on the basis that the extension to the south is excessive in size and renders it overbearing in its appearance in the vicinity, and leads to a loss of the sylvan rural amenity.
Do we have a second, please, for refusal? Thank you, councillor MacLeod. Any other comments, members, for refusal? Louise or Rachel?
Thank you, Chairman. What I would suggest is, the proposal lies within an area of special environmental quality within which the local authority aims to promote landscape enhancement and conservation of the area's local distinctiveness. The development, by reason of its size and bulk, taking into consideration the extended element over the approved scheme, would be overbearing in appearance and would erode the semi-rural, sylvan character of the area. The proposal would conflict with policies D1, D4 and BE3 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan. Yeah, sorry, I included that, D1, D4 and BE3. That's right.